Welcome everyone to the August 15, 2023 City Council Meeting. At this time, I invite Vice Chair Ritchie to do the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you. Please stand and join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now please, please join us in a moment of silence. Okay, thank you so much. Would anybody like to offer any acknowledgements this evening? Yeah, I have several on my list, but the first one I have is Councilmember White and I and Mira were all at the Ogden Twilight last night, which was so amazing. I have the Beck T-shirt on here to celebrate too. But that's the second concert I've gone to in the last week, and I just want to really applaud the efforts of our event staff and everyone that worked on all of these events that we've had, because not only do we have Ogden Twilight going on right now, and there was just the Pride Festival, of course. There was also the Night Out Against Crime that we went to. There's the farmer's market happening right now in Ogden City. There was another really great concert, a hip-hop concert that happened this past week. There was also another amazing performance at the Dumkey Art Plaza the other night, kind of a pop-up dance performance. And I just, I have to say, I mean, our city staff is just so awesome, along with all the partners. They're involved in those events too. But I just celebrate them so much because they're out there in the heat and out there late at night and dealing with thousands and thousands of people. And they just do an amazing job, and it all went off without a hitch as far as I'm aware. So I just really wanted to celebrate them. They did such a great job.
Chair, I do have one acknowledgement, just the presence of Commissioner Sandow, who has come today. We're gonna do a, on our consent agenda, but I thought we ought to mention that she is here. I'm not sure if anybody else is on there or not, but so... But I thought we had to mention that she's here.
Absolutely. Yeah, thank you so much for coming and your service.
Chair, I mean, I think it was last week we had the ribbon cutting for the OGX, but it does start on the 20th, so I, bravo. I, there was times I thought, I don't know if this is going to be done in time, but they did a great job. And so it's, it's exciting to see it.
Super excited. It's so fun to ride it. Yeah, ride it up there on the campus and everything. It was awesome, too. And I also just want to mention that, I mean, this week, a lot of schools are going back into session. And I know that there's a special back-to-school night at Odyssey Elementary on Thursday evening. So of course, council members are welcome, or anyone else that would like to come to that. That should be a great celebration as well. So ball is coming. Great. Well, next up, we'll talk about the consent items or consider them. And we have planning commission appointments or reappointments, and we have an appointment of Michelle Williams and reappointment of David Graff and Jennifer, as we said, who's here in the audience.
Chair, make a motion that we adopt the consent item as it is published to the agenda.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Hyer and a second by Vice Chair Ritchie to adopt the consent items. This is a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. And thank you so much for your service again, and hello to your friends that are with you.
Chair, I heard from Dave Graff, and he is at a candidate.
Oh, yeah, candidate event. So everywhere, yes.
But he acknowledged that.
Awesome. Yeah, we really appreciate everyone's service. Up next, we have Barton Briarly. See?
We don't.
Oh, yeah, I don't see Barton. We have a report from the Planning Commission.
Yes, this is a first. Can we table it?
Did we see him earlier? I don't think I saw him earlier in the work room either. Okay, well, we could just move on to public comment and then come back to that in a few minutes. Does that sound right? Okay, great. Well, up next, we'll have a time for public comment. You can comment to the council regarding any concerns, ideas that you have. If you're online, you can, if you're on the Zoom meeting, you can raise your hand and you can speak for three minutes. If you're here in the audience, you can step up to the podium and state your name for the record, and you have three minutes to speak.
And Chair, just a reminder, we won't have a public comment in the next meeting.
Oh, yes. Thanks so much for the reminder. Yeah, we have a public hearing in the next meeting for the redevelopment agency, but we won't have general public comments. So if you have anything to comment about there, step on up. You're welcome.
Good evening. I'm Teresa Bramwell. I usually like to talk about things that are being discussed, so this is a bit weird to just get up here and make it up out of my head. So I will talk about a couple of things that kind of stuck in my craw in some of the meetings that have transpired before. In the meeting where we were discussing the airport redevelopment, and there were some business people that came and sat over here, and I had asked the question to Brandon Cooper how these businesses were intended to be included in an airport development. And he got up and said, "Well, it would be the developers." The developers are encumbered with the job of including the businesses, the property owners, in the development. So I had an interesting conversation last weekend with an owner of a property that's on the BRT line. He just bought it. It's a 32,000 square foot, used to be office building. I think he's converting it to residential or a mixed-use situation. So I said, "Oh, well, you know, I've got a property that's on the BRT, too. Do you want to buy mine?" And he was just very blunt with me and said, "Well, sure, but you wouldn't want to sell it to me because I'm, I would at the most only pay you 60% of what it's worth." And I, I believe that to be true. I've been in the real estate business for a long time, and I know that investors, developers, people of that realm, of that nature, they're specifically in the business and only in the business to make money. So then what we're, what we have is we have people that own property in your city that are taxpayers and property owners who have no intention of selling their property. Their property is not for sale. They have, you know, they own what they own. They have their business going on. And so Ogden City comes in and says, "We're redeveloping, and we're putting the onus on the developer to include all these people that never wanted to sell their property in the first place." And these developers are willing to pay 60% of the value of the property. So how does that come together? At what point is that a functional situation? You know, these people are probably saying, "Make me move. I want twice what my property is worth." And this guy's saying, "I'll give you half what it's worth." How does that happen? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments in the audience? Okay, we can go online. It looks like we have Ira McNair.
Hi, can you hear me now?
Yes. Go ahead.
Okay, all right, great. Thank you. So the reason why I'm here today is because I received an email from the Sierra Club and from Keel, Utah that Mayor Caldwell drafted a letter to revoke Ogden's participation in the Utah Community Renewable Energy Program. And if that were to actually be implemented, we could reduce our emissions by 45% by the year 2030. And the goal, of course, of that, as you know, is to have 100% clean energy by 2030. So I, I don't know how serious this removal of Ogden's participation is, but because the elections are coming up and because this is an important cause for me personally, I just wanted to express my enthusiasm and make my request that Ogden stay in this program, that the utility agreement gets authorized, and that we proceed to the regulatory process and finally get some clarity about the cost of the electric rates. And that's all. Basically, we have, you know, we've already voted on this a couple of times already. It's a really wonderful program, and I think we should continue to be leaders in this transition for renewable energy. Our climate needs it desperately. Thank you.
Do you mind stating your name for the record? I know I said the name that was posted, but we needed your name for the record.
My first name is Ira, I-R-A. My last name is McNair, M like Mary, A-C, and like Nicole, E-R.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
M-A-C.
And now Angel Castillo.
Good evening. Angel Castillo, Ogden resident. Thank you so much again for your commitment to accessibility, allowing people to be online when their work calls them other places and they can't quite get there on time. I really appreciate that very much. I too echo the sentiments of the previous commenter that I believe that we should be participating in the next step as we move forward through the CREP program. It's imperative because this is the biggest thing that we can do right now to reduce emissions. 45% is huge. And I list up again what I had listed up before at the previous meeting, that the objection of this will negatively impact people with AMI is below 60,000. There is a commitment from myself, from O2 Utah, from the folks involved in Clean Air at Weber State University to find the people and the time to make sure that all of the folks at below 60,000 AMI are reached out to and either connected to a supplemental service for financial support to pay that extra whatever that may be costing that citizen, or to connect them to other programs or help them to opt out if that's what they need. So I urge you all to let us move forward through the next process and be a leader in Weber County. I would like to speak to the RDA policy document with regards to the acquisition and conveyance of real property. I'm, I'm very excited to see the council moving forward and defining things with more parameters. It is possible, I missed this in the document, but I'd like it addressed if I did, that we have the language for an official signed appraisal by an outside agent as opposed to a broker's estimate, which is not legally binding, which will not actually cost someone their license as an appraisal if they are not making sure that we get the highest return for that property. So if I've missed that, please let me know. If not, I encourage you to add it as you are putting on guardrails to protect the safety of the property that we purchased with our tax money. So I'd like to make sure that we put that extra piece of information in there if I have missed it. Thank you so much. Enjoy your evening.
Thank you. And then next up, we have Heath Sato.
Hi, Heath Sato, Ogden resident. I actually, on that note about our RDA process, I had brought up the Brown Ice Stream Building last time. I spoke to you guys and I'd asked what the status of what that was because the contract says it will be ready for occupancy in like three months now. And I, it appears to be that the developer is allowing it to just rot, and it's like the last remaining bit of history we have for the Wonder Block area there. And speaking to the importance of using actual appraisals, the value of that building was presented to you by a broker or presented to you, presented as, the broker's estimate was presented as an appraisal. And that broker is the business partner of the person we gave the building to for a good, really good price. And I just want an update on that. I want to reinforce our need for stronger guardrails about how the RDA functions to make sure you are getting the best possible information. And speaking of buildings that the city has owned, has the mayor gotten a timeline on the dinosaur park? Their plans to take over the building that the wildlife rescue is in because they're, they're busting their butts. I've been over at the wildlife rescue, helping them do repairs on a new building they purchased. They're having trouble getting things moved through the city. And it, this is all seems so unnecessary. I don't, I still haven't heard anything about any timelines and why it was that they were rushed out. I hear a number of people say they, you know, a lot of nonprofits would like a deal like that, and I just keep pointing out that the dinosaur park, it's great, but they have the exact same deal. It's, you know, they're using city land and can be kicked out at any point with a certain amount of notice. So I don't see how pointing out that other nonprofits would like a deal like the Wildlife Rescue Center is meaningful in any way in this issue. So updates on those two things would be great. Thank you.
Thank you. I noticed that several people just entered the room, so we are actually already on the public comment portion of the meeting. If anyone that's come in a little bit later, I'd like to make just general public comments to the council, you may. We don't have a time for public comment on the next meeting for the RDA. Welcome.
Hi, Travis Pete. I come for one of the agenda items, but evidently it wasn't presented. But I do want to say with regards to the public noticing in the newspapers, it's such a negligible amount to keep the people informed. Terry Comby Johnson, who is a good friend of mine and then also a friend of the community, she sculpted the statue up at the ice sheet with the mother helping the sun off off the ice called "Let's Try Again." Multiple items out at the Ogden Nature Center, as well as a fountain at the Eccles Art Center. I had her and told her about this staircase, this wonderful staircase that comes down Porter Avenue called the Butler Way. And so I said, "Could you help me recompose that?" And so she did, and it's just essentially saying, "Here's what it could look like." And so the dynamic of, of what that could be if it was restored, and yet the city had it declared surplus property and was about to sell it, except that I saw a notice in the paper that said, "Public notice, surplus property," and I thought, "Let's look, look into this." And it says, "Our neighborhood got together and signed a petition that said, 'Please do not surplus this property.'" It came back, and fortunately, Ms. Eller Smith found out that it was also actually a public road, so it couldn't be declared surplus in that manner, but it was protected. And so I think the same thing. If I hadn't seen that notice, this would be a loading dock today. And so the dynamic of saying how important public notice is, is beyond important. And, and the negligible amount saying, "We're now going to come in compliance with state law." And I think even just the, the, the dynamic of saying, "Who sees the paper? Who doesn't see the paper?" And, and then the concession prize of simply saying, "Someone that doesn't take the paper can come down to City Hall." We have this thing called COVID. If anybody heard about it, that isolated people at home, so they're not going to come to City Hall and read that. We have these things called winter storms and other intermittent storms that happen. People aren't going to come to City Hall to try to find those notices. So as that comes back onto the agenda, I would say if the votes not no, then simply say, "Come back to council" or "Come back to administration," say, "How many times did we not notice on the public notice site?" And then what is being done to archives from a pure library science standpoint? I grew up living through the digital, the, the microfilm at the, at the library of reading newspapers and everything else. How willing are we to lose history? Because there's not a digital archive that says, "Here's what it is." And I guess, again, the questions, have we checked with the library science to say, "What's the, what's the repercussions of this long term?" Because then even when administration wants to find something out, the dates might be lost because it was digital and as soon as you updated the new thing. So, thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments in the audience? Welcome.
Hello, everyone. Mark Stevenson. Forgive the prepared remarks, but I tend to lose the thread sometimes, so bear with me. I'm a member of Ogden 100, a community group which is supporting Ogden's continuing participation in the Community Renewable Energy Program. And I'm here to urge all of you to vote for Ogden's continued participation by signing the utility agreement when it comes to a vote in the city council so that we can continue to participate in the next steps of the program. Several of the speakers have already addressed the press reports about Mayor Caldwell's apparent drafted letter which would attempt to unilaterally withdraw the city from the Community Renewable Energy Program for reasons no one seems to be able to explain, including the mayor himself. Needless to remind you, this would directly contradict your previous votes to participate in the program and make Ogden the only one of 18 communities to withdraw before the final decision point. Leaving it now before the final details are even known makes no sense. It would create unnecessary barriers to Ogden's participation in the program later on. If we're able to rejoin, which is contingent on the Utah Public Service Commission voting to allow it, we have no guarantees that would happen. And if we leave now, we have basically just wasted the $70,000 which you all voted to appropriate to be a part of this process to start with. Certainly, questions and uncertainties remain, and we're all eager to see the final details of the program, both you and everyone else in the city who's been following this. Ogden City has been a part of the process throughout, and so they are part of that decision-making process and these conversations. But what we do know at this point is the following. Rocky Mountain Power, by their own admission and analysis, has admitted that 60% of their coal-fired electricity plants are uneconomic, more expensive to keep open than to close compared to alternatives, including renewables. Yes, they want to move to renewable energy, but only at their pace. And in the meantime, they have an interest in making sure that we consumers continue to pay the debt on these inefficient plants as long as possible. Utah's electricity receives more than five times the amount of coal-fired electricity than the U.S. average of 10% as of last year. This program alone would reduce Ogden's emissions by a whopping 45% by 2030, and no other program on offer from Rocky Mountain Power or anyone else comes even close to reaching that goal. Signing the utility agreement does not commit the city to final participation in the plan. That vote will come once the final costs of the program are known. Individual consumers will have the option to opt out of the program if they wish. The program also includes low-income options for customers who qualify for assistance with the utility bills. And lastly, the people of Ogden deserve to have a choice in our energy production. Right now, we have no choice.
Thank you.
The Community Renewable Energy Program is something that I think we need to let the people of Ogden decide for themselves at the household and business level. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
David Timmerman, Ogden resident. It's good to see you all here. Appreciate the work you do, and I know it's work. Okay, here we are. We're in the middle of a nonpartisan election, right? And some of these seats might change. Some probably will. I would like to encourage each and every one of you who've taken this journey with us so far to continue and finish the job. The Clean Renewable Energy Program is an important and viable step for our community. Ogden is known as a gritty town. We need the grit to follow through and do the right thing when it comes to taking care of this planet. We're way behind. We have really no options in Utah. This is our only opportunity. And as my colleague just pointed out, this is not, it is not set in stone. But at this point, if we don't move forward, if we don't take the next step, if we don't have the courage to do that in spite of what the mayor may think or, or may even do, then it's on us as a community and, and you as a council. I would just ask each of you to think that through. I know some of you are already on board and, and, and I'm, I'm appreciative of that. I would like to see us 100% as a city council, supporting the Clean Renewable Act. And let's get us to the, kind of the final, almost the finish line. We're getting so close. Let's not allow the mayor to turn it upside down. Do all you can, and I understand there's limitations. But I'm asking you as a resident, this matters to me. I think it matters to most of the people who live here. Most of us are physically active. We like the outdoors. We bike, we hike, we ski. Please, I think this is one of the most positive steps we can take as a city for many reasons, but also just on its face, that Ogden does care and that Ogden appreciates trying to solve, solve the problem of our carbon production and ongoing fossil fuel consumption. So I just ask you to please support us if you can on that. I sure hope you do. I think it's an easy thing at this point, regardless of what the mayor does. Thank you very much for your time and have a good evening. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments here in the audience? I know a couple other people just came in. Is there only a public comment period? Okay, well, oh, sorry. Please, come up. Thank you. I just looked down. Right at the wrong moment. Sorry.
I'm sorry. I'm trying to hear what you're saying.
Oh, yeah, please step on up.
I don't know who else left these here.
Oh, glasses?
Say, Adrian Zubler, Ogden resident. And I wanted to make sure that, I'm going to address this only to the people who live in Ogden, okay? Our people here. I just want to say, you know, over the last couple of weeks, you know, I've gone to these different events and the different debates and talking about city councilmen and the mayor, and it sort of follows along with what you were just saying, is that, you know, I appreciate each and every one of y'all, and I know sometimes we've shared different opinions and been on different sides of, of a view, but I really appreciate everything that y'all have done. And I just wanted to make sure I said that before things change dramatically over the next couple of months. And then the other thing is sort of following along with what he said right beforehand is, I guess I challenge each one of y'all. I know everybody's going to be working toward the positive side of working with Ogden. But what I'd like to see is all of these candidates for the mayor and for the city council that after the elections and everybody's sort of, the dust has settled, I hope that every single one of y'all that are changing the, the dynamics of your life, that you still continue to work with the council, work with Ogden as citizens. You know, I believe that we all will make this a better place. And I look at it that, you know, everybody keeps saying, sort of putting Ogden down in so, so many ways. I look at it that what I'd like to see is that we all work together and make Ogden the, the city that people want to emulate instead of it being people down south. So I just put that out as a challenge to everybody, and thank y'all again for everything that you do.
Thank you. Did you want to make a comment? Would you like to make a comment? Did you come up? Sorry. I saw you rearrange your seats, so I thought maybe you had a comment.
My name is Eric Jacobson.
Yeah, step on up to the mic.
And I'm not going to hear you very well.
Oh, that's okay. You might want to repeat your name on the mic.
Okay. You got it?
You can say it in the mic.
Oh, my name is Eric Jacobson. I thought I did. I, a lot of people have talked about CREEP, and I don't want to repeat what has been said, but there are a couple of points I think that are important here. The legislature passed the Community Renewable Energy Act in 2019. I don't think it's a coincidence that Pacific Core, shortly after, changed their long-term plan to include a lot more renewable energy. CREEA is, has pushed them, and it continues to push them, to get more and more renewable energy. They did come out with a plan two years later, which by 2040 will be almost entirely renewable energy. But it, but they also looked at some other plans that would get into all renewable energy by 2032.
by 2032. They didn't do that because they weren't pushed hard enough. We need to push. The other point I'd like to make is people talk about renewable energy being cheaper, and it is, like quite a bit, and that it cuts down on CO2. It does that too. But coal plants and oil plants put up a lot of pollutants that cause a lot of people to die. The estimated number of deaths from pollution in the United States from coal and oil plants a couple of years ago was between 200 and 350,000. Those deaths are concentrated in heart problems, COPD, strokes, and are especially hard on Children are born early and on very young neonates. So this is an important thing, not just because it's cheaper and because it cuts on CO2, it increases the health of the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I don't see any more movement in the galley here. Let's see. Would anybody like to respond to some of the items that were brought up? I know maybe Brandon Kubler might like to make comment about the brown ice cream building. Would you like to comment about that? Welcome.
Thank you. I didn't quite hear the whole comment, but I heard the part about occupancy by a certain date, and I do believe that's true. I don't have the agreement in front of me, but I believe the original agreement had a two-year deadline with a one-year extension, and we're probably getting close to that. We are working with a developer because the development of the ice cream building was always meant to correspond with the development of the Wonder Block because they share certain facilities, they share access. The parking structure that the city will build is about 10 feet from its back door. So all that was meant to be designed and worked together. Because of the delay of Wonder Block, that has delayed the progress of the ice cream building, and so we're working through that with the developer. We're not quite sure what we are going to do yet. There's some steps that we might need to take based on our decision, but we'll let you know as soon as we get to that decision.
Thank you. Any other comments about the comments?
Okay. One was, I was, I'm just curious. If anybody knows, you don't have to tell me right now, but if you could send me where the 45% reduction in emissions comes from if we participate in the Community Renewable Energy Act. I'd like to read that and know where that's coming from. That's the first time I'd heard that one. It was tonight. And then the comment about, let's get 100% behind CREA. Just want to be clear, I'm not 100% for it or 100% against it, but I am asking that you give us the opportunity to have 100% of the information we need so that we can be 100% certain of the decisions we're making and the way that they impact our people. And I'm sure that's not very politically popular, but that's just how I roll. I just want to make sure I've got all the information before I go all in or all out. Thanks.
Awesome. Any other comments? I don't know if anybody wanted to speak to the Dino Park Agreement. Mayor, did you want to make any comment about that? Because I understand, Dino Park is, the board is running that facility for the city, right? So that's a little bit different than the wildlife rehab, just my understanding.
Right. Yeah, that's correct. That the city has an operation and management agreement with the Dinosaur Park Foundation for that facility, where it was just a lease with the wildlife rehab center. But I don't have any further comment on the plans or the timeframe.
Okay. Do we have an update about the agenda item that is from the planning commission? Should we table that? You coming up? Okay, come on up. Thanks for joining us.
On a moment's notice.
You were just working late, and then suddenly, you never know what will happen. You're going to be leaving at 5:00 from now on a Tuesday.
That's okay. No, I'm happy to be here, and you have that presentation already. Rock and roll. I love it. Members of the council, it's really good to be here tonight. And really, what we're doing with this amendment is trying to align, oh, I love this. Thank you. Trying to align our noticing with recent updates with the state code. Under Senate Bill 201, there was the elimination of the requirement to post certain noticing in the newspaper. And we'll get into the aspects of that. Notices are still to be required on website and other methods, but in addition, and to replace the newspaper noticing is a Utah Public Notice website, which is what we're proposing to do. So this would affect, currently, these are the items that we issue noticing for in the newspaper. These would be replaced with that website notification, mainly dealing with code changes and street name changes, general plan amendments, things of that nature. That's a citywide, broad notification. So this kind of lays out how we're noticing right now. And currently, we're noticing to property owners and tenants within 300 feet of projects, and that's even beyond what is in that list on that previous slide. In the newspaper, on the city website, and posted here at City Hall physically. With that change, would, again, go just remove the newspaper notice and notice on the state website, notice website. Some of the reason this has been initiated on the state level is there's been a drastic change on how people consume their news and their media. I know personally, I'm a texture guy, and I've never liked newsprint at all. It's worse than a chalkboard for me. So when I was able to get my news on digitally, I love that. It's much better. But we can see just in the amount this shows from 1993 to 2003, just a major change in that. This change is really to reflect, you know, the newspapers, but really the intent is to try and get word out to as many people as we possibly can and let them know of things that are going on and changes that are being made. And so with this statewide initiative, we want to be a part of that as well. We did, just out of curiosity, did a survey for our planning commission to see who had heard about items that were posted in a newspaper. And 40 people had come from that survey that we took for an item that was in the newspaper. And we surveyed to see how many had found out by the newspaper, and of the 40, only one had, and that was because they noticed it was on the front page that time. So we're really seeing that, you know, the interaction with the public is changing formats and changing. And so thus, we have the initiation. Part of some things to consider, and I've always been amazed when I see noticing out. I remember the first time I saw Jeanette, our office assistant, putting together all these big stacks of notices. I couldn't believe how much we were sending out and the cost. Its average is, you know, about $200 for doing a citywide notice like that. Years it has fluctuated, as of this year, we've already spent 2,400 of our budget towards that. So this would really help in that aspect as well. So with that, going to Planning Commission has recommended to you that we adopt this amendment to replace the noticing of newspapers with the state website, no V-City website.
Thank you so much. Any questions or comments?
I have a question, Joe. On those websites, the city website we have, but also the state's, I don't know if you're aware, are people able to sign up for alerts to receive an email like you would, like an agenda for this meeting?
That's a really good question. I know the council, you guys have a really awesome website, and I know you have that kind of functionality built in yours. I'm not sure if our end has that or if the state does, but I can look into that for sure.
Okay, thank you.
Joe?
Chair Jaburka. I was going to say, the state does have that same sign up, and you can sign up for as many things or as one thing if you want. It's not all or nothing.
Thank you, Janine.
I just wanted to make sure. We're going to put it on our own website and the state website.
That is correct.
And then on our website, will we do any type of?
Link to the state?
Like, no, not a link, but like more of a public announcement saying, from here on out, these are the two places you will find them. Is it just going to start showing up on the city website?
I think that's a wonderful idea. I think that'd be the intent if this was adopted, that we would have that as like a main banner item from now on. This is, please go register with the state site.
Exactly.
And it's helpful because even though the council has that, maybe for previous, to be involved with the planning commission levels and other commission committees, having that reference to the state site definitely be good.
And then just, yeah, just to piggyback on Councilman Ritchie, just, yeah, if we can say, feel free to sign up for alerts, that'd be great.
Yeah, absolutely.
Perfect.
Good point.
Chair Jaburka?
Sure.
The only concern that remains with me, Joe, is the archival of those notices. So that, you know, a year or two years from now, there's some dispute about whether something was legally noticed. How does the state's website and even our website hope to provide that kind of an archival evidence so that we can say, yes, it was noticed on this date and blah, blah, blah?
Whatever. You know, that's a really good question. I'm just worthless to you today.
Hey, shut up. That's half the battle.
But I, yeah, I would imagine they have that. I know, I use your guys' site a lot, like the councils, it's awesome, and I know you have been archiving. And I know there are archive requirements for the noticing. If there's any question of whether it has been done or not, you know, definitely, I imagine the state has that functionality, but if that's something we want to hold and do a little more diving into, I'm happy to look into that.
Councilmember White?
Yeah, I mean, I think I brought this concern up the first time we talked about it, and I think we haven't gotten any further. And, Joe, it's not your fault. It's being able to answer these questions. I have a big concern that we don't have the process fully baked yet. And so it may be baked, and I don't know, but I'm just, I'm really concerned that we're just going to make this switch, and we don't have a process for notifying or where it's going to sit or anything like that. And so...
I guess the only thing I would point to that is just, really, the only thing we're changing is a newspaper versus a state website. Now, as far as, as I think about it, I don't know if the standard kept an archive of what they've posted. Maybe they do. I'm not sure. But I know noticing wise, nothing else would be affected other than that one item.
Just, people don't know where to go. I mean, they don't know what, you know, oh, all of a sudden now I have to go to the state website. And I guess I'm just, I had that concern when we first talked about it, and I'm still having that same concern. And so I don't know if the answers are there. I just don't, I mean, all, there's been three of us that have brought something up tonight about the process. So I don't know if it'd be a benefit of, if there's a reason to maybe table it tonight and get those answers. It could be already fully baked. I just don't feel comfortable. I'll be honest, I'll vote no for it tonight just because I don't think it's...
And I think it's kind of a challenge. I mean, I can understand, I totally understand because I have reservations too. And my reservation's more to do with sort of our digital divide and ageism. I just know we have a very large population of older folks, nothing against older folks. I'm one too. I mean, I can go to the golden hours now. I qualify. I can, yeah. Yeah, I'm really old. Anyway, but I just feel so worried that they don't have all this digital capability in the same way that we do, and they do still get the paper. And even if it's just one person that gets the extra information, I think it's important to me too. And I also have some concerns. I feel like it's a challenge for the staff perhaps, and maybe I'm wrong about this, but would you build a system before we approve this if it's possible we don't approve it, right? Or have that figured out? I mean, I guess that's kind of a chicken and egg situation, right?
I mean, I think the intent is, is, and I think was brought up, that, you know, really getting the word out there. Now, I mean, I guess the question is, is there some people that don't have a computer, but all they get is the newspaper? What is that like? That would be, you know, again, we look at it, that's low numbers. Is that, and, you know, is that extra cost and that extra effort and all of that still worth that, you know, pursuing that? I mean, I think in any case, it's still good to use the state site because we're always trying to get people involved and notify. And if we could like use our minds and tell people, you know, telepathically, this is going on, you should be here, you know, and then letting people know what's happening. It can be difficult to have that all in your head, and that's why we just have the processes in place and...
It's almost like we'd need like noticing for six months or, you know, for a cycle of some sort so people would know that it's transferring to, like, one time to me wouldn't be enough to sort of say, oh, we're moving to this new process, you know?
Chair, I...
I, sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
Maybe I missed, when, when would this take place? If this were approved, when does it start?
Technically, and I think the way it's presented, would start when the council approves the ordinance. But one thought could be, maybe there's a phasing period of where we do, we notify and say, hey, we're going to be transitioning to this. The council has approved this, and maybe till the end of the year. And then, then we're no longer doing the newspaper and trying to really hit it hard. And we've got good groups that could, you know, in the city that could help without the website and with newsletters and things of that nature to spread the word.
Did you have additional comment or questions?
I do. I, as, you know, noticing is always a sticky topic. It's one of those that you can't ever overnotice, and you almost always undernotice. Does keeping it in the newspaper fix that? I'm pretty skeptical that it does. But I, but I do have the concern with the archive. And I've also, my personal experience with the state's website is it's kind of not very fully baked yet either. There's a lot of things missing off of it when I go to look for different notices, not just for Ogden City, but for like the county or other entities that should be noticing through that website. So I, I think we do need to have a, have a transition period to make this thing work. I am one of those old people too. I think I got the most age of any of us, and I haven't read the newspaper for, I can't tell you how long. I get my news digitally also. But I do know people who will not get their news digitally. So I think we need to do something to transition. I think it's just stopping today would be, would be a challenge. So I guess I'm going to propose that we take like a three-month thing here and see if we can't adopt our, adapt our website to do this archiving thing so that we can verify that things have been noticed. And that we post that as a suffix on every one of our notices that is in the paper, that this will be transitioning. And that notices, the requirements to notice, you know, the state requirements. I don't know if you can back up your slide a little bit to see what those are, but, yeah, the property owners, that's all a mail notice. And your graph, I suspect that that really high number was word of mouth. You know, people that heard from the neighbor, that heard from the other neighbor, that, you know, that's what I suspect that other is because you didn't have word of mouth. Or there's various things. Yeah. So I think, I think we, not only do we have to make sure we're meeting the state requirement, but we need to, we need to do our best due diligence to make sure that notices get to people that matter.
Can, can I just?
Yep.
I just wanted to ask Councilman Hira a question, just to make sure. I agree. I guess my question is, does it need, for the archive aspect, does it need to be on this, does that aspect need to be part of the state website, or does our own website?
We don't have any control over that, but I'm going to assume...
I'm assuming we can.
I'm going to assume that if we notice it on our site, we're also noticing it there.
Yeah, I was just wondering if we, I don't know if request is the right word, but if we insist that that capability is added to our website, does that, does that solve this problem? I guess, is it okay to just have it on our end?
Solve is a strong word, and I'm not sure we're going to solve it, but it probably gives me ease.
Okay.
There's a couple other comments here, too. Go ahead.
I'm sorry, Joe, for...
I'm sorry, Joe, for going the extra mile and staying late at work tonight.
Hey, I love it. It's easier here than home.
Yeah. Um, no, thanks, thanks for pitch hitting. Uh, that's mostly what I wanted to say, but I also just wanted to say that I, I've been really surprised at the number of constituents that, that still really lean on the newspaper. Maybe, maybe it feels like a, a small segment of our community, but there's just a lot of people that if it's not in the newspaper, they don't know about it. I've been learning that throughout this, uh, political season. So I, I was surprised by the fiscal impact. It's very low. I am mindful of the impact on the, on the staff, but I think the fiscal impact is worth the, the trust and transparency that, that comes with the effort.
So I was just going to say, I just went to the pub, Utah Public Notice website and searched, and it appears that Ogden City has been posting to that site since at least 2018. And, and, you know, RDA, Diversity Commission, Planning Commission, Board of Zoning Adjustments. I mean, I see all these, all these notices that are there where you've got attachments, links to the attachments, the agendas and, and that. So I don't know if that answers some of the questions we have.
So that, those notices clear back to 2018 are visible?
Yeah.
Oh, wow.
So, and I, and I don't know if I just can't scroll over further than page 54.
There's a lot.
And, but it seems like we have been noticing on that state website. So, um, with, again, the attachments, you just click on the link and there's the PDF and it shows you what was noticed and the agenda and, and that sort of thing. So, um, I can't see where you can sign up for an alert, though. And that, that kind of troubles me a little bit, just because, I mean, somebody who wants to follow along, they're going to do that, but it would be nice if you get that alert, because then it kind of prompts you to be aware of some of that. So I'd love to see if that's a functionality I'm just not able to see right off, or it could be added, not that we control the state's website.
Right, right.
Chair, if I can make a couple of recommendations? I mean, I know it is there because I've done it for a couple of things. You're right, it's not maybe as easy to find as we would hope it would be. But, uh, you know, we might, I, I would recommend that you might table this till August 29th. That would give, um, the planning department to come back and answer some of the questions you've raised. And then perhaps you could change the effective date of the ordinance, push that out six months or so, so that then in, when it becomes effective, we've already had this communications plan activated.
That's a plan to me. Anybody like to propose that?
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Second. And we did have the ability to receive public input on this item, which thank you for pointing out, I had it circled and didn't do. Um, but we do have a motion and a second, is that to table it? Is that what you said?
Table, yeah, till the 29th of August.
Till the 29th. Um, should we take public input first and then we'll see how we feel? Is there anybody here that would like to give public input to this item alone? You can state your name for the record and you have three minutes to speak. And if you're on the Zoom meeting online, then you may, um, do the same, raise your hand and then you'll be able to speak. Welcome back.
Welcome. Here's Travis Pate. So with regards to the public noticing, I saw it in the newspaper and then 15 to 30 of my neighbors then heard it from me. So if you're saying I'm not important, because I'm one, those 15 to 30 neighbors wouldn't have heard it either. So, and as far as archiving, you pulled up the archives, but you didn't pull up the notices that are not on there, because there are multiple notices that are not posted on there. So you can say, we have been noticing, but we have, but the accuracy of the noticing. So to me, the assignment back to the planning commission and say, just give us every notice you've had and show us which ones aren't on this utah.gov website, because I've found them not on that website. There's multiple meetings that are not on that website. Yes, we've been posting, but, and as far as the expense, how many millions of dollars did you post? And we're asking for $2,400? One tenth of one percent of, of one, one tenth of one percent of one percent to, to just put it in the newspaper? And we're also saying, here's an independent source outside of the government. So not saying I'm a conspiracy theorist, but when you're relying a hundred percent on ogdencity.com, utah.gov, hmm. And I can get a Google email and I can send it to you and I can actually ask Google to put it in your mailbox from two years ago for $5.
I had no idea that was possible.
And so, hmm, so let's, let's, what, what can be manipulated in the website? Microfilm and an independent resource is not, is not, doesn't manipulate that easily. And so the, the dynamics of simply saying, we're doing this out of expediency. Um, Thoreau actually talked about expediency with the fugitive slave law in 1853. And he, so here, here he's saying, it's expediency that if your slave ran away into my state, I now have to, I'm obligated by the interstate compact to find your slave and return that slave to you. And they've talked about whether it was expediency and whether it was lawful, not whether it was right. And so what I'm saying is the newspaper is right. It's not a matter of expediency. It's not a matter of simply saying, wow, the state law changed. And so we're now just attempting to become compliant with state law. And so just the, the, the historic value, the library science value, the research value, and the independent source value is, is, is immeasurable. Again, this staircase and the potential to restore it, it'd be a hundred percent gone if we allowed the non-newspaper notices. And yet now, oh, the creative art district and we're encompassing and dedicated by David Olin K. in 1917. But no, we're not going to put this in the newspaper. So $2,400 out of a multi-million dollar budget? Please.
Thank you, Travis. Any other comments here? Welcome back.
Hi, Theresa. Um, I don't know if you've noticed, but I don't necessarily trust the government. Um, I feel like I personally have been very damaged and taken advantage of. Sorry.
That's okay.
Multiple times in my life, specifically by Ogden City. So I don't like anything that makes it easier for the government to manipulate the taxpayers or the citizens. And if this passing this to say, we're only going to put it on our website where it's convenient for us to find it, but not necessarily convenient for a citizen to, to find it who's used to finding something in the newspaper, I don't, I don't trust that. I don't like it. I feel like it's kind of undermining the, the, uh, the people. And that might not even be the truth. It, it might not be the truth. It, it might be that it's a good thing, but I don't like to make it easier for the government to take advantage of citizens and taxpayers. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments here?
David Timmerman, Ogden resident. Um, I, uh, I believe Mr. Nadolsky hit the nail on the head, and I was surprised, too, at the amount of money. And it's like, that's a drop in the bucket. So I do think regardless of the change in the state statute or code, Ogden does a lot of things for the community at their expense and good things. And I think this would be a good step in that direction. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, we can go online, um, with Angel Castillo.
Good evening. Angel Castillo, Ogden resident. Um, shout out to Joe for showing up. Uh, I know you were not supposed to be here, and I totally understand that, uh, the texture thing, for me, it's microfiber towels, so it just, they don't work for me. Um, there are still a whole lot of people who get the paper and, uh, I too qualify for the golden hours. As a matter of fact, I joined golden hours a couple of weeks ago and that was kind of a reawakening for me. I just don't think of myself as qualifying for a senior summer, but I guess I do. And, uh, when I was there, I was there for a couple of hours and I watched tables of folks come over and pick up the three papers that were there and pass them around and read them. You know, there were only three papers, but at least a dozen people had read them in the short time that I was there. And so it has to do with a particular segment of our population that the paper still is their primary source. Uh, three people that I know of that live within like a hundred feet of me have a paper subscription, and that's where they get their news. And, um, you know, great big shout out to, uh, Mr. Pate about archiving and access for the public and telling the story. I understand that we have digital, but there is also that, with the, that piece that operates at the library and, um, I'm concerned about that. And then just from the big overall arching thing, um, anytime that you can prevent or come up with receipts to mitigate legal exposure for somebody saying, you didn't notice, I'm going to sue you. And you're like, well, yes, we did. We did it here, we did it here, we did it here. And, and this council is so committed to transparency, I just, with others, I find it hard to believe that a $2,500 expense to make sure that you're going to reach people who, according to a quick Google online, the standard examiner has a circulation of 30,000 on Sunday and 25 daily. I, I just find it hard to believe that you wouldn't want to be intentional with regards to reaching out to a particular population that we know for a fact gets their news from a paper. I'd like you to table this item for a little more robust discussion. Um, I agree with Councilmember White that we, we need to look at an overall system to make sure that we're not doing anything with unintended consequences or that we have a very clear through line with how this is all going to work and how we're going to transition out of it. Something like this, if you were to transition, would take a year, but again, for $2,500, I, I, I think you should just hold on that for right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so no other movement or hands raised? Um, I'd be happy to go back to this motion. We had a motion by Councilmember Hare, correct, to table, and a second by Councilmember White?
Yes, Chair, can I just make a real quick comment? I, I mean, I know that the $2,400 is, is not a whole lot of money, but there was, um, concern from the Recorder's Office and there were, there's some staff involved, uh, time and, and hours and dollars that we have not accounted for either. So I just, I want to be clear, it's not just the $2,400.
Yeah, and, and I, that was what I mentioned in my comment to Joe, too, is I am mindful of the impact on the staff. The, I have to think that the, the workload imbalance or issue, seems like it'd be worse with those, the cards that we're mailing out and the fiscal impact might even be bigger for that. And I think, I don't see those providing a ton of real great information. They're so small and, you know, packed within both of it. No, I know, I know, but we're talking about the newspaper now, but in terms of workload, I, I think it'd be a bigger discussion if we were talking about those.
Okay, so we have a motion to table this until August 29th, we said. Um, that'd be a voice vote. Okay, so voice vote, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, great. Well, thank you. We'll table that, get some more information, and thank you again, Joe, for being here. Really appreciate it. Awesome. Okay, any comments from the administration?
Um, just want to say on that item, um, again, thank you to Joe for being here and we will, uh, we've listened to all the questions and we'll get information back to you. So thanks for that discussion and we'll look forward to having better information or more information on August 29th. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from council members to close this meeting?
I have a quick question. I was just wondering if, uh, the, if the administration might know or having any new information about the building on 25th Street? Um, I know there are some issues with, um, I think related to fireproof lumber.
I don't think Councilmember Lopez takes the paper.
I don't take the paper.
It was in the paper today.
Okay, so, yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll get caught up on that.
We, we could still talk about it. I was just making a joke. Sorry.
Would the administration like to comment?
Um, sure, that, that there was information, uh, that, that the developers submitted some additional plans to the city that are being reviewed to hopefully, um, you know, they're, they're going to attempt to resolve that, that issue, um, so that it will be approved by the fire marshal. And we're still reviewing that, but we should, we should have that information out pretty shortly on, on whether those, um, new plans are going to pass the code and fire concerns.
Okay, I, I knew that. I was wondering if there was any new information.
No, nothing, nothing, nothing quite yet, but, but those are.
Thank you.
Under review right now. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, I'd be happy to take a motion to adjourn.
Second?
I have a motion by Councilmember Blair, a second by Councilmember Nadolsky to adjourn this meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Okay, welcome everyone to the August 15th, 2023 Special Redevelopment Agency meeting. Please let the record reflect that all board members are present. And we'll start with approval of minutes. We have the closed session of August 23rd, 2022, Board Member Hare.
Yes, Chair, I have reviewed those minutes, found them to be accurate to the best of my recollection.
And the closed session of October 4th, 2022, Board Member White.
Yes, Chair, I read those and they are accurate to my recollection.
And the closed session of October 25th, 2022, Board Member Blair.
Yes, thank you, Chair. I have reviewed those and they are accurate.
And finally, the special session of November 15th, 2022, Board Member Lopez.
Yes, Chair, I reviewed the minutes and found them to be accurate to the best of my recollection, and I move to approve the minutes.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember, I mean, Board Member Lopez, and a second by Board Member Blair to approve the minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. We have two consent items. Um, this will be a roll call vote. We have an item to amend the redevelopment agency bylaws and also amendment to, to the joint resolution on acquisition and conveyance of real property.
Motion to approve, uh, common consent.
Second.
We have a motion by Board Member Lopez and a second by Vice Chair Ritchie to adopt the consent items. This is a roll call vote.
Board Member Hare?
Aye.
Board Member Lopez?
Aye.
Board Member Nadolsky?
No.
Board Member White?
Aye.
Board Member Blair?
Aye.
Vice Chair Ritchie?
Aye.
Chair Chaburka?
Aye, and that passes. Would you like to make comment about your dissenting vote?
Yeah, I thought it's probably popular to, to disagree with your opposition, but I found the comments in the public about having a, uh, having a, an appraisal for our properties to be worthwhile comment. But the other thing, too, that I hadn't considered until reflecting on that comment was the language in the resolution about leasing. And I just noticed that it said short-term leasing and just lately I've been reflecting on the possibility of, of, or viability of a long-term leasing for some of our RDA properties. So I don't have any issues whatsoever. In fact, the resolution does say, let me look at, again, that will convey property in a manner calculated to receive the highest and best economic return to the agency. So I do feel good about that language, but the, the short-term and the long-term lease thing is just kind of a new concept that I've been considering lately. And I think I even talked to Brandon about it before, um, didn't want to, didn't want to be excluded as an opportunity or an option in the future. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Okay, up next we have a public hearing. It's a fiscal year 2023 to 24 budget amendment, um, regarding junction parking, track line property sale and Capital Square property sale. And we welcome Lisa Stoudt, our comptroller. Property Sale, and we welcome Lisa Stoudt, our comptroller.
Hello.
Hello. Thank you, board members. Um, I, Rich, uh, Councilmember Hayer, Board Member Hayer, sorry. Um, you had requested some information from us at a work session. Uh, we received that today. We are waiting for an updated report from the construction company we've been working with regarding the Junction Towers, those two towers. Um, so, uh, I, I will get with Mara, and we will get that information to you, uh, for something tomorrow. All right. Um, the total budget request, uh, for this appropriation is, uh, 38 million. I'm sorry, I'm having trouble with my eyes. Um, 3.8 million, just over 3.8 million dollars. Um, the first part of this budget opening is in the CD, CDB RDA budget area. Um, we completed a bond in, uh, June, and this is to appropriate the portion of that bond for improvements at the Junction area. And the bond proceeds ended up being, uh, just a little over, uh, just, uh, with the premium, about, uh, just a little over $2 million. Um, and 15,000 of that is going to the fees related to the bond. The project that, uh, that we'd like to get underway is related to both those Junction Towers. Uh, the total cost is estimated to be 1.8 million. So we'll have approximately $400,000 left after spending these. However, with this new information, we certainly have a lot, a lot, you know, we have the, the needs out there, so we can, can finish spending the bonds. Um, we're also asking, uh, the board to approve a budget opening for the revenue related to the sale of property. Um, this is related to, uh, property, uh, parcel out in Trackline. It was actually owned by the developer, and, uh, when they put the, the parcel under contract, they asked if the city would take the revenue and do some landscaping out there with those proceeds. So we're asking to appropriate the revenue of $805,000, um, to landscape improvements at the Trackline. And then the final, um, budget action we're asking the board to appropriate is for another sale of property. This is related to the Capital Square project. Uh, uh, the developer at Capital Square, uh, purchased the property for, uh, $757,000. According to the LTDA, uh, the city has taken that money and, uh, has actually paid off the, uh, D.L. Evans debt that was related to that property. Um, so we're asking for the consideration of the board to approve the appropriation of, uh, just over 3.3.6 million, 3 million, 3,638,000.
I can help, but I didn't want to interrupt.
I am sorry. I had surgery on an eye, and I'm just, I'm struggling to see.
No, you're doing great.
Apologize for that.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Lisa? Okay, great. Well, this is a public hearing. We'd be happy to take comment on this item alone. If you'd like to step up to the podium and state your name for the record, and you have three minutes to speak, or if you're on the Zoom meeting, you can raise your hand. Welcome back.
Thanks.
Travis Pete, I appreciate the opportunity again to be here. Um, the dynamic for the Junction Parking Carous, I think that's, it just, it's, it's a great thing to make sure that we have that sustainability. I do have a poster at home that just shows a parking meter, and it says the end of parking meters. And so I hope that this actually improvement maintains free parking at the Junction instead of us having to pay at the Junction to support something else. The Trackline Property Sale, I think that improvement that has come through there has been tremendous, and I think even just the landscaping, if you've been out there, it's, it's just a tremendous asset. And then the only other thing that's been probably the biggest asset is actually getting alternate water sources under the railroad yard, under the river, and to that development, which then also then jointly feeds, uh, the West Ogden area, instead of simply everything solely being under the viaduct and reliant upon only one stream, one stream of, of, of water resource. Uh, and, and so I think that's a pretty remarkable thing. Capital Square, I think the, to me, I think, again, a revolving loan fund for any future project like this, that there should not be a loss to the taxpayers. We say the best revenue aspect, um, but I think if that entire area, unlike Portland and Jefferson Commons that says, here's market rate plus some below market rate, uh, that's a better format instead of concentrating poverty. So as soon as we're saying here, here's some more, here's, here's, we're endorsing you to concentrate some more poverty into an area right at a hub of our bus rapid transit, our cross-town to the Ogden Weaver Applied Technology College. If you look at the history of that property, the Mayor Godfrey actually even had planned for the, uh, AW, OWATC to have a satellite campus on that, on that campus, and yet, boom, nothing, it's gone, you know? And yet, Weber State, a block south, has now got their own satellite campus. And so I think we're, we're, we're losing out by giving all these benefits with, and asking very little in return. And so I think that the format, yes, we're obviously obligated for the sales and some of those other things, but we're not doing a revolving loan fund. We're not doing market rate plus then some low mod housing, which then lifts the whole neighborhood. I think that's, that's the, the topic to me is just, we, just concentrating, and we, we, we're losing James Madison Elementary soon, but yet we might need it soon enough if there's housing that's affordable and multi-use, multi-size, that people can be there, uh, families can be there and say, oh, yeah, we just send our kids across the street. And so I think that those are the types of things is that we've, we've, I've watched that block since childhood, and Skaggs and Safeway being there, and yet I've missed a market downtown. Rancho has been tremendous, and I compliment and applaud them for their willingness to be downtown. So I'd say be a little more smart on all future investments.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, Teresa Bramwell. I guess this is my opportunity to comment about the thing that actually is going to affect me. Uh, so the Capital Square, I spoke with the developers the day they put up the sign, because I was there taking the garbage out at my property, and I saw that they were there, and so I stopped to talk to them. And, uh, they confirmed to me that the building that they're building is low income, and it is for rent. It is not for sale. Nobody will earn any equity that lives there. Their money will leave their pocket, and they will never see it again. Um, and I said, okay, well, you're replacing the, uh, wheelwright lumber. That's what used to exist on this property. I said, um, and there's supposed to be commercial use on the main level. What's it going to be? And they said, well, on this side, there's going to be a leasing office for the building, and on this side, there's going to be a gym for the building. So there will be, and then they said, oh, there could be a coffee shop on the end. So I guess the coffee shop is something that I could use, being a neighbor of this property. Um, I probably wouldn't because I don't drink coffee. But, uh, I don't, I fail to see how anything that they're building there is going to raise the neighborhood, help any of the poverty that exists extremely dramatically in this neighborhood. Uh, East Central has a 31% owner occupancy rate. Uh, that I am certain has got to be the lowest in the state of Utah. Uh, the owner occupancy rate for Weber County is 72%. And the owner occupancy rate for the state of Utah is 70%. So we're talking about an area that has 31% owner occupancy already before this building's even built. Uh, so the only thing I see is doom and gloom coming my way in a fast hurry, unless things turn around in this area. And I don't know how that's going to happen. That's your job. It's not my job, but I'm here trying to, trying to help. I'm trying to help. Uh, and I think that the developer's probably paying about 60% of what that property's worth. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we can go online with Angel Castillo.
Good evening, Angel Castillo. Um, it's no surprise to all of you that I've had some challenges with how we operate with paying developers to build property, and there's massive disagreement between myself and community and economic development, uh, about but for, and that principle of when you're going to be using it. Um, I just don't feel that when we're bringing the land, that we should be paying developers to do things. It's, it's, that land is owned by our residents' tax dollars, and we have plenty of people who are willing to build here. And my biggest objection with how this whole deal went down, if I recall the meeting that the sale happened, it had everything to do with the fact that if we're giving a developer land and we're buying a piece that they can't handle financially, I just don't think that's good business. I believe that we are, as property owners, bringing what should incentivize a project, and that TIF is only supposed to be used for infrastructure. It should be that last mile in a project where it doesn't pencil for the developer, but the city steps up and pays for something that we need anyway, that we will use, like water, sewer, or road. And so I understand that we are where we are with this particular piece, and that you're more than likely going to approve this and continue on as you have been. But I encourage you to, to really take a look at, at how we're being accountable for money that doesn't belong to us, that belongs to the taxpayers, and that is quite a steep bill, and that, um, the comments that Ms. Bramwell made, I, I find some points in there that also resonate with me. We're, we're too heavy on rentals, and it has to, and, and rentals are necessary, and I have nothing against being a renter. I was a renter for a very, very, very long. And I believe that that type of density belongs on transit lines, and, and it's necessary. But we have a huge gap in what is available for sale, and I challenge you to look for more creative solutions to bring online at least percentages of each project that are available for purchase, perhaps requiring a certain amount of condos that can be purchased. We have a huge gold gap in our market for properties that are 250 or below. So please consider and look at how we're using TIF and how we're paying developers to build projects that they may sell for a profit, and we are still paying bonds. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next is Hisato.
Hey, Hisato, I'm a resident. Um, first off, I'd like to thank Mr. Cooper for the clarification on the brown ice cream building contract allowing for another year if the city or RDA, I guess, um, agrees to that. Um, my concern is primarily that it's just sat and gotten worse. But anyways, um, I hope you guys will look into making sure that building is not just allowing to deteriorate.
Yeah, this is
And as far as, as far as, yeah, I just wanted to say, yeah, I'm sorry, I just wanted to say thank you for the clarification on that. Anyways, the, um, I also want clarification on this project, um, what the actual cost to us was, um, what the final cleanup cost and everything after the sale price and everything. What does that, what does that number come to? Um, I just would like that clarified for the public. Um, and that's, that's pretty much it. Thank you.
Thank you. One left. Any other comments?
Chair, I'd make a motion that we close the public hearing on this item.
Second?
I have a motion by Board Member Hayer, a second by Vice Chair Ritchie to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. Any other questions or responses to comment?
Chair, I have a, I have a couple of, uh, responses, and I, I just want to throw this out there. Um, Capital Square is a very big parcel of land, um, and there is going to be a mix of for-sale product. There's going to be a mix of low income. There's going to be a mix of probably high, uh, market rate apartments. Um, and the reasoning for doing that is to not have, um, huge areas in our city of just low income, or huge areas of just high income. And, and so this whole entire project is that, and it's a, it's a really good project, and if we didn't own the land, we wouldn't be able to do what we want to do with this, which is bring everyone together. So this is just the, the start of, uh, of, of a very big project. So I just want to make a clarification that it's not just a, a li-tech deal. And by the way, this is where we want, um, apartments. It is on the, the BRT. It is on a, a, a bus line. So, um, the comments made by, um, Ms. Castillo are wrong. That we, we want that. That's exactly where we want these projects. So anyways, that's, uh, just I wanted to make that comment.
Yeah, and then I, in the plan, I also saw that we're having a grocery store there and other retail, and then also a lot of green space for that whole block, which I really appreciate, because sometimes when we're in those denser areas, it becomes just a concrete, kind of all concrete or all pavement. And I'm really excited about the plans for landscaping and trees and a walkable area and a playground and a lot of great things for those residents there of all different, um, income levels. So
And mid-block crossings, and hopefully maybe into the Oasis Garden, and so giving, um, it really uplifting that, um, that area, so.
And, and I, I guess I disagree with the fact that we have plenty of low-income housing, because we have this conversation all the time. I mean, another thing that would resolve that problem is if all the landlords that have single-family homes right now in our community decided to just sell them. That would help with our supply and demand as well. So people living in apartment complexes are not demonized in my eyes. They're just people that haven't yet been able to purchase their own home because of the cost point, too. So that's my comment about that.
I was hoping I could ask Brandon a question about the landscaping. Are you good to answer on that?
For the Trackline?
Yeah, on the Trackline one. So the, the transmittal says that the sale, the proceeds from the sale of the land that's owned by the developer were, are assigned to the RDA
Mm-hmm.
to be used for landscaping. So what's the mechanism for how that's going to go down? Is it going to be, is the RDA staff going to be, uh, doing an RFP for the services for landscaping and going through a bid process, or is it, or do they assign it back to the developer to do that?
So maybe back up even one step further. The reason why that transaction took place is because under the Master Land Transfer and Development Agreement that was approved way back at the beginning of this project, there were certain things that the developer was obligated to do as part of their duties as the developer. Over time, with, um, some changes in the development entity and some other things, they have not been able to fulfill those duties. And so we negotiated with the very last lot, that was the last lot that was sold in the property. We negotiated with them that, um, they would make an assignment of the sales proceeds to us. Um, therefore, we would take on the, um, the requirement of fulfilling the remainder of those items that were incomplete, mainly landscaping. But there's some signage and some furniture on the trail and things like that. So it's just lumped in, lumped in together as landscaping. So we assume, so they made a, um, at closing, there was an escrow document. There was a, a legal document that dictated how the money was wired to the city at closing, and then under those same terms, we would fulfill, uh, that obligation on their behalf. Um, the mechanism to do that is they already had contractors in place. There's been a contractor in place throughout the whole process of the project, but they weren't getting what they needed from the developer to complete it, i.e. money, direction, those kind of things. And so now that we're in that role, our staff is working with that contractor. Um, the money has already been received because the lot was sold a while ago. We're just doing the, uh, budget transfer, or the budget opening today. Um, so now So now we have the money necessary, the contractor is already in place, and we have a scope of work that's been in place for a while. We're tweaking it to update it because it's, it's aged a little bit. And so we're ready to just complete the project as intended.
That helps a ton, thanks. So is the 865 the total proceeds from the sale of the land? So is it not necessarily the total amount needed to do the project? It just, what I'm getting at is, I'm not a landscape contractor, so I don't have any idea. It just seems like a ton for landscaping.
Well, it is a ton. There's a huge amount of common space, so this is meant to landscape. I don't know the acreage, the total project is 51 acres. I don't know what the common area is. So there's hundreds and hundreds of plants, there's some hardscaping we're going to do, there's some infrastructure like water lines and sprinkler systems and things. So it is a lot of money. Like I said, there's some signage, there's, one of the monument signs, I think, is $60,000 just by itself. So there's some expensive items still to do. But yes, as we, as we implemented this solution to correct, you know, to help the developer get out of his, his position of default, then we looked at the budget, looked at all the remaining items, tried to square that up to make sure that we could complete this with the remaining funds.
Okay, so the whole 865 will be used for?
Yeah. And if it's not, for whatever reason, then we give it back to them.
Back to the developer?
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions or comments?
I think there was a question about the cleanup, the cost of the cleanup of that site.
Oh, at the Capital Square?
Yeah. I don't know if we have those numbers or?
What was the question?
It was like, what was the total cost for cleanup, et cetera? But I don't know if you're totally finished with the cleanup part, right? Because only about one property is started.
We're not finished. There's multiple properties there. Part of the property where the building is, that was just announced, the groundbreaking, we call it Q25. Part of the property was Wheelwright, part of the property was Forsey. I can't remember the purchase price for Wheelwright because it was a while ago. I can remember Forsey because it's more recent. We purchased Forsey for about $440. The reason why the developer paid us, so there, there, there's a lot of comments about TIF and I couldn't quite keep track of it because it, it wasn't correct. But there is no TIF in this deal and we're not paying a developer, they're actually paying us. So they paid us the, the money that we paid for Forsey, so they paid us $440. And then they paid us the per-square-foot pro-rata of the Wheelwright lumber. So we took the total amount of the cost of the land that we paid that we have debt on and then we just did some math to determine the per-square-foot price. And that's what makes up the 770s for whatever they paid us that is partially what was recognized tonight. So, so they paid us, that is, represents a subsidy because the development still needed a subsidy, but it was done through the cost of land and through the environmental remediation, not through TIF.
So we'll be able to, maybe you can come back with us later to give us an update on the cost of the cleanup because I can't remember either.
Yeah, when it's all done. But those proceeds that we received from the sale of the land, a portion of that, most of it went to pay off the debt, as Lisa said, but there's about $90,000 that because of the way that they calculate the amount of debt that's owed on that, those parcels, it was less than what we received in the sale. So there's a little bit there that we can use to apply to the, to the remediation.
So the per-square-foot pro-rata, that's based on the amount we paid?
That's right.
Not the amount of what it's worth today?
That's right.
When was it that we bought it again?
Probably 2015, 2016, around there.
Do we have any idea of the delta between valuation now and then?
I mean, we can get that for sure.
I'm just, just curious.
Yeah. Obviously, the, the Forsey property with, that has the environmental contamination. And so that valuation, you know, that's, we went into that kind of knowing that, which is why we received environmental protection from the state and those kind of things.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? All right, thanks, Brandon.
You're welcome.
Awesome. Okay, if there's no more discussion, I'd be happy to consider a motion.
Chair, I'll make that motion that we, I move that we adopt Resolution 2023-16.
Second.
We have a motion by Board Member Hire, a second by Board Member Blair to adopt Resolution 2023-16. This is a roll call vote.
Just, oh, please. Can I ask some questions real quick?
Of course.
So are you frowning because you think we need to change the, change anything on there or like, should we split them apart or?
Oh, so you can vote on each item separately?
I didn't mean to frown, sorry.
Oh.
That, that must be my thinking question face. No, yeah, I'm just, I guess the answer is just, just leading to more questions. I'm not, I'm just trying to figure it out.
Okay.
Like for, I feel like I need more information all of a sudden than I didn't feel like I needed before. That's all. Sorry. I gotta, I gotta, not a good face when I'm thinking, I guess.
Yeah, sometimes we push a bunch of stuff together that may?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we can separate them out. That's the other option.
No, I've been enough of a hassle for you. Sorry.
And that's what we're here for, not a hassle, yeah. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. This is a roll call vote.
Board Member Nadolski?
No.
Board Member White?
Yes.
Board Member Blair?
Yes.
Board Member Hire?
Aye.
Board Member Lopez?
Aye.
Vice Chair Ritchie?
Aye.
Chair Truburka?
Aye, and that passes. Would you like to make any comment?
Yeah, I kind of answered it. I, I'm not objecting, my vote is not an objection to the, to the items, just suddenly feel like I needed more information to, to know for sure what I was voting on, but support the success of everything that's been, that's been passed. Thanks.
Thank you. Any comments from the executive director?
No comments right now, thank you.
I mean, we, we could try to call you the president for a minute. For the other one. Any comments from board members?
Yes, Chair, I, I am very sympathetic to the comments that have come in that, that lends us to start to look for creative ways and good ways to allow for homeownership. That is something that is seriously needed in our community. Not that renters are bad, I don't want to vilify anybody that's renting, but I also want to be real careful that we don't vilify the landlords because without landlords, people can't rent. However, I think that the balance that was such for Regional Council has done, the study that they've done has indicated that we are seriously short on our housing stock that is for purchase. But we do need a wide variety and some people want to rent a single-family home. So landlords that rent those shouldn't be vilified either, so I just mentioned that.
Just want to apologize to you guys for my sudden changes of mind. On the first one with the consent item and the, I guess procedurally, I probably should have made a motion to lift it from common consent so we could have more discussion. The, the comment I heard about the valuation method, I was, I went through it one more time and looking for the language that I read about the, the means of ensuring the, the best economic outcome. And I just found that short-term lease provision that I hadn't caught before while I was doing that. So sorry for the last-minute change and sorry for all the questions tonight, but not being critical of the, of the proposal, just need more info. Thanks.
Any other comments? Okay, great. I'd be happy to take a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion by Board Member Hire and a second by Vice Chair Ritchie to adjourn on favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.